Arizona be held October 22, 2020 at 6:00 PM at the Cottonwood Recreation Center. And want to thank everyone for the, just being aware of the change of venue. Normally, we've been meeting down at the clubhouse, but we expected a large crowd tonight. We wanted to make sure that everybody had enough room to sit in here, and so we needed the extra space. And additionally, we're going to ask that once folks get up to speak during this hearing, afterwards you please give up your seat for someone else who may be waiting outside to speak tonight. So we have two items tonight for discussion, consideration, and possible legal action. The first item, of course, is the public hearing regarding the possible annexation of property adjacent to the city that includes both U.S. Forest Service land and a 280-acre parcel of private property known as Spring Creek Ranch. And the second item is ordinance number 687, amending the city zoning ordinance relating to marijuana and medical marijuana facilities. This is the second and final reading. So we're really piling on the controversy tonight, plus it's presidential debate, right? So that's kind of a threefold. Anyway, what we're going to do is this is going to be a hearing, okay? So everyone who's here tonight has the opportunity to get up and be heard. We are going to limit public comments to three minutes so that we have an opportunity to hear from everybody. We have quite a stack here of folks who would like to speak. And I believe we have city staff outside who will kind of explain how to fill the form out and make sure that you have an opportunity again to speak. So I really appreciate everyone being here this evening. We do want to hear from you. However, this is a hearing, so it really is just a listening session this evening for city council. You will receive a presentation from city staff, but this session tonight is not meant to be a question and answer session. So if you have specific questions, you can come up to the podium. If you have a specific question, we'll make a note of that if it's not answered during the presentation. But really, what we're here to do tonight is simply listen to you as part of this public hearing. We're not making any decisions this evening that will come at a future council meeting. Depending on which way this annexation process goes and which way the development goes, in the future, there will be many, many more opportunities for the public to address the council. So again, no decisions are going to be made tonight. This is simply a public hearing. I would ask everyone to be very respectful and address your comments directly to the city council, not to those in the audience. We're really just meant to input tonight, just to receive your input, as well as, again, just being mindful that we all live in this community together, and I really do ask for your respect. The last time we discussed this, we had absolutely no issues. It was a very respectful crowd. I don't expect anything different this evening. The conversation, the back-and-forth conversation between council members occurs 365 days a year, so I don't want anyone here tonight to feel like this is your only opportunity to be heard. All seven of us up here are your representatives, and we're here to listen to you, respond to your comments. So that's really where the question and answer takes place. So don't feel like this is the end of the conversation. This is truly just a hearing. The conversation, again, like I said, takes place every day out of the week between your elected representatives or city staff. So without further ado, let's go ahead and receive a presentation from Mr. Ellis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Good evening. Scott Ellis, Community Development Director. As Mr. Mayor mentioned, this is a public hearing for the Spring Creek Ranch annexation, the proposed annexation. If you remember, back in August 18, the city council did direct staff to proceed with the potential annexation of this area. It includes approximately 280 acres of private land and another 11 square miles of Coconino National Forest land. This, these portions of land go to the north of the city, to the east, and then back down to the south to get to Spring Creek. It is north of State Route 89A, circling state trust land. The general plan, or 2025 general plan, the growth area element of it does mention the state trust land out there and the 89 Vine area as potential future growth and development areas for this. So this could be a continuation of that when that time comes. There is a possibility of future annexation of the state trust land, depending on what happens with this. So it is, it is mentioned in our general plan to grow out that area. On September 30 of 2020, a blank petition map, legal description, was filed with the Yabai County Recorder that is required in the annexation process that starts a 30-day waiting period. Within that 30-day waiting period, in the last 10 days, we have to hold a public hearing. That's why we're here tonight. This is within that last 10 days. When that 10 days is up, then we can collect signatures that will end on October 30. We will need 50%, greater than 50% of landowners, and at least 50% by valuation. After that, we will draft an annexation agreement, a 10-year service plan that is required, and then council will adopt all of those and propose a annexation ordinance to vote on, make a motion on. We are required to bring in the initial zoning, comparable zoning, that the Yabai County currently has, so we will make that determination. If the applicant proposes to change the zoning to something else, we'll go through that process at a later date. We're looking at, everything goes the way it should, possibly having an annexation ordinance on the, in front of council by December. Again, the zoning must be equivalent to the county. The densities and the uses cannot be more intensive unless the applicant does come back in and ask for a rezone to do so. That could trigger, depending on what they might do, could trigger a general plan amendment if they ask for a rezone, could be a major general plan amendment. They could apply for the PAD zoning that would require that. That in itself is a pretty significant process that must be completed in the same calendar year that they ask for it. So usually, that'll happen in the January to April timeframe, so there's enough time to hold the required meetings, the required hearings. There's a lot of input on that. So if this does go forward, that's what we're looking at. And again, that would be from January to May for those, the rezone, major amendment, all of those hearings, planning zoning commission, and city council several times. The effect of the annexation, we would receive some state shared revenue, sales and rental revenue for any housing that might be out there, any commercial, whatever development might be proposed out there. The city fire would respond or potentially look into an agreement. Right now, it seems that we would work with a potential developer out there to possibly have services stationed out there. Again, that's down the road when the development gets talked about after, after the annexation process. Again, same thing with city police service, have that out there, planning code enforcement, any, any city services out there would then go to that. The roads out there would be all private. City's not looking to take on any public infrastructure as far as roads go. Does have access off State Route 89A towards Sedona and Spring Creek Ranch Road, which is, they have an easement from the state trust land to maintain that, so there's no, no issues for the city taking on that. Water and sewer, possibly a private-public centralized water system rather than individual wells. Again, this is all stuff that would be determined moving forward. As I mentioned earlier, it could spur that annexation of the state trust land proximity of utilities, and we would be adjacent on three sides, so that would fit in with our general plan growth area. The next step after tonight would be to collect signatures of the property owners, draft the annexation ordinance, a 10-year plan, and then bring that to council for action. That is, again, at another public council meeting, so we do have, as the mayor said, opportunity for other public engagement, other than just tonight. Any questions?
Council, do we have any questions for Mr. Ellis?
No.
All right, very good. Thank you, sir.
I'm going to leave this slide up with the map in case anybody wants to see that.
All right, I appreciate it. All right, folks, well, we're going to go ahead and start the public hearing process then. So again, I know that many in the audience tonight and those watching on TV have followed this process from when it was in the county's hands. So you've been here for a while, and I'm sure it must be somewhat frustrating that now you're having to follow it again to the, to the city now that we're discussing annexation of this property. I know that the developer had proposed a use on that property to the county. Tonight, we're, we're not discussing that use, that proposal. We're simply discussing whether or not the city would like to annex this property. If, if they want to move forward with any other proposal, there will be, like Mr. Ellis said, many more opportunities, particularly if it results in a major amendment to the general plan. So when you come up to speak tonight, I would just ask you to please focus your comments on whether or not you feel it's best for this property to be annexed within the city or if you prefer it to be in the county. And I know it's difficult to bifurcate the, what was proposed earlier, but if you can, I would appreciate that very much. And with that, we're going to go ahead and call folks up. Before I do that, I just want to say there, we did receive many, many emails as well, and I'm not going to read each email that we received, but I would like to read the names of the folks that did email us. And the following emails were received against the annexation. There were 13 emails total, and we received one from Keeps Sedona Beautiful, another email from Aaron Sharaf, another email from Burget Lowenstein, Jim Collins, Deanna King, Daniel Cates, Mitch Lorich, Mary Sue Keeling, Heather Chase, Joan K. Myers, Edward Anelli Nylander, Jerry Jewels, and Peggy Chaken. And I'm sorry if I didn't pronounce some names correctly. Again, these are 13 emails that we received recently, folks, against the proposed annexation. We did also receive seven emails from folks that were against a proposed development. And again, we're not considering any development this evening, but I'll go ahead and read their names as well, and that was Darrell Colebank, Kathy Roth, Nancy and Joe Bauer, Carol Johnson, Denise Pepiora, Michelle Jack, and Tricia Egger. Okay, so I'm going to read these off in the order that I receive them. I hope that the folks are in the, in the room tonight, so first up is Pamela Collins. Oh, excuse me. She did not wish to speak, but she did want to let us know that she is in opposition to the annexation. So second up is Thomas Bonk. Evening.
Good evening, council members. My name is Thomas Bonk, and I am here representing the Beaver Creek Community Association. We represent the interest of Rimrock, Maguireville, Lake Montezuma, and additional areas around the creek. We strongly oppose this annexation of Spring Creek Ranch by the city of Cottonwood. The Lisa Browski request would bring about land use changes, which would affect the entire Verde Valley. Such potential density changes would negatively affect the quality of life. It would generate major traffic increases, create excessive impact on the reptilian areas, and would lead to groundwater depletion. As stated by your Cottonwood general plan, each of the surrounding communities has their own distinct identity, history, tradition, and a sense of purpose for their own future self-determination. Questions about how the Cottonwood plan for its growth are considered in terms of the interrelationship of these communities, as well as the critical needs of the city. The general plan also indicates a clear directive to avoid sprawl. Land use in the area of Spring Creek Ranch needs to be addressed as a regional issue. We ask that you please consider, if this moves forward, including representatives from the unincorporated areas and communities in the, in the decision process. Let's all communicate and make informed plans for the entire Verde Valley. Now, on a personal note, I've also reviewed your strategic plan. I have to commend you. That thing is detailed. I mean, it is right, right down to a bumper sticker. What's not in that strategic plan for the 2019, 2020 is any mention of expansion. And I ask that you take that in consideration. It's not in your plan. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. All right, next, we have Mr. Bob Rothrock.
Good evening. My name is Bob Rothrock. I'm a retired council member and a retired school teacher and a general retired guy. But I felt that this was very important, and I wanted to come out and talk to you tonight about growth. I also, like, Mr. Bonk, thought the general plan would be a good place to start, and I found Part II, the vision and values, very instructive. It states, better get my glasses out for this, "There's a need to recognize the role Cottonwood plays as a center for a growing region while also protecting traditional small-town qualities that people appreciate. The proposed annexation to Spring Creek Ranch could profoundly change Cottonwood. This is because it'll draw a ring around the 10 square miles of state trust land, which, as former Mayor Haddig told me when I was on the council, is the bullseye for this area. It'll put it right in the center. Annexation, along with the development of utilities, will pave the way for the state land department to begin the sale of those 10 square miles. In a discussion with a planner at Cottonwood Community Development, I was informed that Cottonwood intends to also annex those state lands at that time. These two annexations will more than double the size of Cottonwood. We will no longer be a small town, and rapid growth could follow. Holding on to small-town qualities will be next to impossible at that point. A small town can absorb slow growth. With four subdivisions open for business in the upper Verde Valley, we're probably pushing our absorption limits. Fast growth is the ideology of the cancer cell, or maybe since it's 2020, a virus. Should this come to pass, will we be able to count on ADOT or Yabai County to help remedy our traffic problems? Good luck getting through the 89A260 intersection and visiting the post office. I also plan to talk about including the other communities. I'm glad Mr. Bonk brought it up. I do want to point out to the council that people who live in the Cottonwood service area but are not in the city limits make up almost twice as much, twice as much in population as the people within Cottonwood. They are for sure paying over half of our sales tax revenues. They deserve a seat at the table. Finally, let's move on to natural resources. The vision and values guiding principles in the general plan includes these statements. People greatly value the natural environment and open space around Cottonwood. Protection of the Verde River-Greenway corridor is of highest priority, as well as protecting and improving water resources. The goal of balancing our human needs with long-term environmental well-being provides a foundation for the community vision. So let's discuss our ability to supply resources for rapid growth, specifically water.
Mr. Rothrock?
Yes.
I'm sorry, the annoying buzzer went off. Your three minutes is up, my friend.
Heavens, it said five on the paper I signed.
Yeah, sorry. At the beginning, we said we're going to limit folks to three minutes. I'm very sorry. We're trying to be fair to all and make sure that we can get everyone to speak this evening.
Can I finish when everyone's done?
I'm sorry?
Can I finish?
No, sir, three minutes. I'm sorry, but you can continue the conversation with council. This is just a hearing, so just, you have three minutes up here, but you can email us, or we can meet with you individually. Thank you, sir. All right, next is Mr. Jack Graves.
Can I take my mask off?
Yes, sir.
I didn't really come prepared with a fancy speech or anything, and I appreciate what these gentlemen have had to say. They covered a lot of things that I would have liked to say, but I grew up in the Verde Valley. My great-grandpa was the first homesteader in Oak Creek Canyon, and I've seen a lot of changes throughout the years, seeing Sedona grow, and I've seen Cottonwood and all the Verde Valley grow. And the biggest concern that I have, besides the fact that most of the people that moved here came because they don't want to live in a big city, and I'm one of those people that doesn't want to live in a big city also. I believe in progress, but if we get all this land and we put up a bunch of houses like Verde Santa Fe, it's going to be looking like Phoenix. And when Verde Santa Fe came in, they claimed they didn't affect the water table, but there were a lot of people's wells went down quite a bit when they started pumping out of there. I know there's a, a big well over there by Spring Creek, and it's been offered to supply all this annexation and stuff, but when they start pumping out of there, how long is Spring Creek going to last? And every, every summer especially, we hear about how short we are on water. Phoenix is doing an adjudication. They all want our water, and they're pumping water out and sending it over Prescott out of the Verde River. And so there's only so much water to go around, and we're pretty much at our limits right now as far as how much water supply we have, especially if Phoenix gets our, gets most of our water. Anyway, that's what I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Graves. Before you leave, I just want to make it, I just want to be clear, you are opposed to the annexation, is that right?
Pardon?
I just want to make sure that you're opposed to the annexation.
Yes, I am.
Okay, good deal. Thank you, sir. All right, next, we have Mr. Craig Swanson.
Hi, my name is Craig Swanson, and I'm representing Keeps Sedona Beautiful, and I'd like you all to imagine an area like this that was proposed to be annexed, the dark blue that's there. It's essentially 300 feet wide, going up from where it joins Cottonwood, up north, over, and down to Spring Creek Ranch. The only way to measure the length of this property is to come up, over, and down, and I don't think anybody looking at something like this would believe that that meets the rule of length not being more than twice the width. If you look at what they've proposed, it's a similar shape, up, over, and down. This is where it meets Cottonwood. Down here, if you go up to the shortest spot, over, and down, you get essentially 316 units of width. I measured this on a scale map, and that was in centimeters. In this map, if you come up, over, and down, the only responsible way to measure the width is here, a dimension that wasn't included in the length. Same is true here. If you come up, over, and down, the only responsible way to measure the width is here. That's 80 units of length. That's a ratio of 350 to 80, far excessive, 2 to 1, and I need somebody to tell me why this doesn't violate the statute on annexation. That's all I have to say, and I am opposed to the development.
Thank you, sir. And Mr. Swanson, would you just let us know too where you're, where you reside? We would appreciate it.
I reside in Sedona.
In Sedona, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Jim Collins. I live in Cornville. I'm opposed to this annexation. I'd like you to look into your motives in even addressing this annexation. Who benefits and who loses? Obviously, the Browskis will be the initial beneficiary. They have talked you into considering this annexation with the end goal of getting you to approve their residential project. They have promised you many thousands of dollars in benefits. So how does it feel to be manipulated? One only need to look at the unworkable overly dense proposal that was presented to Yabai County to see that their plan is only designed to make them, and now Cottonwood, piles of money. Can you look in the mirror and admit that you are being bought off? To make this annexation legal, you must annex 11 square miles of Coconino National Forest, and we may have just proven that that's not even legal the way you're doing it. But why stop at 11 square miles? Why not annex 100 miles or even more? There's no reason why you shouldn't. You're only doing this because it's the Browskis that have lured you in for the tax windfall. You claim that you won't be able to develop the national forest land, but I can imagine that plans are already underway to negotiate a land exchange. We've seen that before in the Verde Valley. Then, of course, there is a state land we just talked about. We all know that you have your eyes on that property to annex. It was proposed that annexing the state trust land will allow over 23,000 homes and 52,000 people to inhabit this area. That's a big chunk in a small town. Is that reasonable use for this pristine land? So who are the losers in this deal? We could start off with the community of Cornville. Cornville has survived for 150 years as an independent, unincorporated community. People moved to Cornville for the peaceful and pastoral life that it offers. Annexation is a slap in the face for all who live there. Also losing other residents of the Verde Valley. Cottonwood, as well as all the other communities of the Verde Valley, are small-town minded. Maybe the city should have a ballot initiative to ask the people of Cottonwood if they really want to give up their open spaces for thousands of new homes and businesses and the congestion that it will bring. Finally, one of the biggest losers may be the members of the city council itself, who buy into the Browskis' plans. Just look at the comments Lisa Browski has made in her run for Scottsdale mayor. Those have been published in the paper in Scottsdale. These statements support public participation in the development process, yet her actions with regard to Spring Creek Ranch show that she doesn't practice the same philosophy here. She cannot be trusted. Will you allow yourselves to be swindled by the Browskis? For the sake of the entire Verde Valley, I hope that you have the sense to just say no to this ill-planned development and annexation. Thank you.
Sir, Mr. Collins, would you mind letting us know where you reside?
Cornville.
Cornville, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Okay, next, we have, are there more folks outside that are queued up to come in? Next, we have Joyce Ribley. And I apologize if I'm mispronouncing names. Okay. Evening.
Joyce Ribley, known as Jody, and I live in Cornville, very close to, should Spring Creek Ranch develop, I would be very close to them. I oppose. I just moved here a few years ago. I like the rural area. I understand why you... I understand why you would want the land to be incorporated in, annexed in. There's water there, it's close to 89A. If you don't take it, somebody else probably will, but, and I'm, and I know that growth happens, but the reason it seems like we have this annex going on is only because of Spring Creek Ranch. I don't want their development. If they put in those, if they're allowed to put in as many homes in, they will have as many people living in that area as all of Cornville right now. 280 acres, and they will have a lot of people living there. It's going to, I'm, I'm opposed, and I know we're not talking about the development, but that's what it's leading up to. So, I oppose. Please, don't allow it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ribley. Next we have Ms. Sherry Ratner.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Everybody's in that had turned any yells.
Okay, great, thank you.
Cottonwood City Council, you have a responsibility to the people of this area to not overdevelop this area. Every single one of you came here to get away from the city and to have open space. What you're about to do with this annexation is, would undo that for everyone here, and there's no place to go. Cottonwood needs to reevaluate their 10-year plan and see whether this annexation is appropriate now, because it really isn't appropriate. By the way, I'm totally against this. I'd like to know if the Browskis submitted a topological map like they were supposed to of the sloping on the property of Spring Creek Ranch, because they were requested to do that on August 18th, and there's been no mention of that. Cottonwood really needs to determine the expense to Cottonwood of annexing Spring Creek Ranch because the Browskis have announced they're not going to pay for anything, not the roads, not for a hospital, not for a police station or a fire department. So, you may be putting the descendants of people who are alive here in debt for generations if you go through with this. Cottonwood needs to realize that if Spring Creek Ranch is annexed with rural zoning that the Browski's going to turn around and try to get 6,000 to 7,000 people here by reapplying for a zone change, which is what they were trying to do for the county. I would prefer that Spring Creek Ranch were with the county, because they know the bottom line for the money, and it doesn't seem like Cottonwood is really determining what this is going to cost you, because you're going to be liable for half the utilities for Spring Creek Ranch, and that's millions of dollars. You're also going to have to pay for the roads, for a hospital, for a fire department. It's not a good deal for anyone except for the Browskis, as I noticed, because I took good notes at the December 19th hearing when, when Eric Browski was speaking. He also came to my community and insulted everybody at my community. It is best not to do this annexation, because it's going to cause you massive debt, and I hope that you realize that. I know August 18th, you said that you weren't going to look ahead. You have to look ahead, otherwise you end up in bad debt that you didn't even know was going to be there, because that's how things happen. You really have to look ahead on this. I'd like to know how you're collecting signatures? Are you going to do a mailing to collect signatures? I'm not clear on how you're doing that. The people here value open space than most of the people in the entire country, or they wouldn't have come all the way out here. If you speak to anybody who moved here, they came here from a great distance because they couldn't find open space where they lived. So, why, so, I think it would be a terrible mistake to destroy the open space in this area. It's bad enough with the Airbnbs, the traffic on the road, and all the RVs on the road that have accidents.
Ms. Ratner, I'm sorry, but your three minutes is up.
Okay.
If you would just mind telling us where you reside?
I live in Cornville.
Cornville, thank you very much for being here, appreciate it. Next we have Janet Miller.
My name is Janet Miller, and I am opposed to the annexation. I'm a 20-year resident of Cornville. My home is located approximately 1/4 mile downstream of the confluence of Spring Creek and Oak Creek, and my property extends into Oak Creek itself. Access to my home is possible only by Oak Creek Valley Road. Since the Spring Creek Ranch project plans to use Oak Creek Valley Road as an egress and alternate entry point, I feel I can represent concerns of the many existing residents served by that roadway. Cottonwood has proposed annexing 6,000 acres of state trust land for future development, and has begun studies to annex the 11 square miles of Coconino National Forest in order to include Spring Creek Ranch. This is at the behest of the Browskis, who are adamant that their overly dense development be approved one way or another. Their development of Spring Creek Ranch will accelerate the rush to urbanize Cornville and the remainder of the Verde Valley. The developers have advocated an urban farm with a density much higher than any urban area of Yavapai County. This urban farm is not compatible with the Yavapai County Comprehensive Plan, which describes Cornville as a rural community area. One of the Comprehensive Plan's land use elements' main objectives is to, quote, "preserve and promote stable, safe, attractive rural communities where residents share a sense of pride," unquote. This does not equate with an urban farm. All of us here who are trying to maintain the rural character of this area have been upset by the attitudes of the developers when they came into the area, failed to gain the trust of the community, and attempted to push their urban farm plan through rezoning. They did not seek input from the residents about what would be acceptable for development. They have thereby completely on their own decided to create this urban farm which misrepresents not only Cornville and the other communities of the Verde Valley, but flies in the face of the Yavapai County Comprehensive Plan, the Verde Valley Regional Land Use Plan, and the Cornville Community Plan. They've misstated facts about the area, such as the flow from the waters which creates Spring Creek. Their repeated claim of an outflow of 6 million gallons per day is 20 times the actual flow. This is per the most recent Arizona Water Atlas of 2009, and based on those measurements in 2009, the flow is actually less than 300,000 gallons per day. The developers' disregard for the lifestyle and concerns of the Cornville residents is evident in their actions. For this and many more reasons, I strongly urge you to help preserve and protect the rural character of Cornville by voting against the annexation and preventing the zoning change to develop an urban farm. Please maintain the current RU-2A zoning. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Miller, and you may have said it, but would you mind telling us where you reside?
Cornville.
Cornville, thank you very much, appreciate it. All right, next we have Dr. Lisa Ferguson.
Good evening. I've been a resident of the Verde Valley for over 12 years now, and I represent a large group of people who reside in Cottonwood and Cornville and the rest of Sedona that we've banded together to try and do what is necessary to protect, protect this environment. Annexing this property to Cottonwood is not a good idea, and it actually goes against the principles that President Teddy Roosevelt enacted protecting the forest lands. This is going to cause a significant portion of land, either state and/or national forest lands, to no longer be protected, which he placed as one of his agenda items, to put 100 million acres of U.S. land under protection so that they would not be destroyed by development. And I don't wish to see, or nor do these people that I've had many communications with over the years, wish to see our natural environment ruined, and it's already started to happen in the past two years. I've noticed that the traffic has gotten horrendous, that significant developments have been approved that have made things worse, that have negatively affected the quality of life that we have here and the natural beauty that exists here. So, I live in the Village of Oak Creek, but I've lived in different parts of the Verde Valley, including Cottonwood, so I'm quite familiar with everything that's going on here, and I vehemently, along with the rest of the people that are working with me, oppose the annexation of this property and development of, into something in the future that would actually harm what we have created here for good. So, thank you, Village of Oak Creek. We're vehemently opposed to this development and annexation. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ferguson. Jay Ruby, you're next. And it looks like we have plenty of open seats available, and I don't think there's anyone else queued up outside, so you're more than welcome to take your seat after you speak.
Thank you, thank you for having this hearing. First, I want to, I want to talk about Spring Creek itself. It's an area with unique archaeological value, biological diversity, and serves as a critical part of our commons here. It's a place where people go to restore themselves, and it's something that should be protected. That riparian area is unique. I'm going to say it again, the riparian area of Spring Creek is unique. This annexation would threaten Spring Creek, or threaten Spring Creek. I'd really, I'm a little clearer on what the intention with the annexation is, and it seems like it's a gateway to development, which would change the character of this community, and many people have already spoken to that. What I'd like to speak to is, how do you make efforts to move Cottonwood towards preserving the open space that's here? What can you do to make sure that Spring Creek retains its character going into the future? What can you do to make sure that it remains a legacy for future generations? It is a unique area. So, I'd like to see some type of vision or plan on how to preserve open space instead of being on the defensive. How do we move forward to protect the character and quality of our community? I'm hoping that there can be some type of dialogue with the county so that places like Spring Creek can be preserved. I know this echoes things that are happening near Prescott with the Granite Dells, and there could be a model there for how a regional park can come about. Imagine a regional park here in the Verde Valley along Spring Creek. I want people to think about that. I live at the end of Waddell Road, I've been in and out of there for 20 years, I'm very intimate from the headwaters of Spring Creek to where it goes into Oak Creek. It is a special place. And lastly, I just want to say, do not make decisions that will Maricopa or Yavapai. Don't Maricopa or Yavapai. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, Bridget Lowenstein.
Honorable Mayor, honorable council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you about the Spring Creek Ranch annexation proposal. I tell you upfront that I am against this annexation plan tied as it is to the development proposal. I probably fully agree with all the comments against annexation you may hear today, but what I really want to is remind you of a statement Mayor Alinsky made at the September annexation hearing. The mayor said he is so proud of a decision the council had made against an application for a building permit on top of a hill in the city's skyline, because it would entail altering the shape of a hill iconic for Cottonwood, a decision based on the city's values. I would like you and council to apply the same ethics standard to the Spring Creek Ranch proposal. A healthy riparian area is the pride, if not the goal, of every community in northern Arizona or Arizona as a whole. Just think of the efforts being made by the Verde Valley communities for its Verde River, all to guarantee a healthy watershed and riparian area. And here is this extraordinary Spring Creek riparian area, and a proposal to plunk 2,100 residential units on either side of the creek. Such human density in this riparian area will destroy its health in that of the creek. Don't you want this exceptional area protected as you protected that hilltop? Then vote your values. Don't annex if you can't protect the riparian Spring Creek area and its water resources. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Lowenstein. Would you mind letting us know where you reside, please?
Sorry, I live in unincorporated Yavapai County and close to Sedona.
Okay, thank you, ma'am, appreciate it. All right, next we have Ms. Mulcair.
Thank you for letting me speak. I live down Oak Creek Valley Road and down Merritt Ranch Road. We have a ranch on Oak Creek. I've lived down there 25 years. I think this is a backdoor way for them to come into our community, which they know Cornville does not want them. Last year, we had five cows killed on Oak Creek Valley Road, and we don't have hardly any traffic. I can't imagine what they're going to do to the livestock that travels back and forth across that road. May seem very petty to most people, but it's a sad situation going on out there. We are a small community, we don't need this community going in next to us. We chose to live there to be rural. I just think this is such a backdoor way to come into our community that they know they don't, they don't, we don't want them. It's been clear, so this is their next step. I am totally opposed. I hope that you really consider Cornville, that we want to remain rural, we don't want this at all. I appreciate your time, I live in Cornville.
Thank you. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to address the council that hasn't yet filled out a form? You're more than welcome to, we're at the end of the, end of the stack here. Again, I want to stress, this is a hearing, so we're just here to listen to you now, but this is not where the conversation ends, so this is going to be an ongoing conversation. You're more than welcome at any point in time to email your council, email staff with questions, share your opinion with council, sit down with us, stop us in the grocery store, whatever it takes, this is, this is the start of, likely the start of what's going to be a long process. There were some specific questions that were asked that I'd like to have staff respond to, and if I missed any, if you wrote any down, we can, we can get to those as well. But first, there was a speaker that asked if there was a topo map submitted, and I know that we're not considering that or really at that stage, but I think maybe if you could respond to that question, that would be great.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. No, at this time, we don't require any of that topographic analysis. It's not anything that affects the annexation itself. If and when we get to that process, it would be referenced within our hillside development ordinance. So, anything that might be applicable to that is at that time when we would do so.
Can you go into a little bit of detail about the hillside slope ordinance that we have in Cottonwood?
Yes, sir. So, we have a hillside development ordinance that specifies different percentages of slope, and within those percentages, you have up to a certain amount of the land and the slope that can be disturbed. It is not necessarily just for vertical slopes, it does count towards washes and any sort of topography that has, that's basically not flat or has greater than 20% slope.
Okay. And then there's another question about how the signatures are collected.
Typically, we will mail them out, there's various options. We don't need a lot of signatures in this, for this particular annexation, there's not a lot of property owners. The one that we did earlier this year, we went ahead and mailed out the petitions to have signed and sent back have signed and sent back to us. That's likely how we'll do it again this time. There's no one way that it has to be done.
I know you went over that a little bit at the beginning of the meeting, but I think maybe what the question was asking is, there's not going to be a petition that goes around that residents sign. This is up to the property owners.
No, sir. The petition to be signed only goes to the property owners who are affected by the annexation, and by affected, I mean within the annexation area.
They're property owners within the area. Okay, thank you. And then there was another question or concern brought up about annexing the forest land, and would that offer protection?
Mr. Mayor, counsel, all the forest land would remain basically unchanged as it is right now in regards to the Forest Service having jurisdiction over it. Obviously, they're their own entity. If they came in trying to do any sort of land swap, I'm sure they would, I can't speak for them, but I'm sure they would be talking to us to find out what goes on. But when everything's said and done, it is remaining as Forest Service land until they decide if ever to do something with it.
But just because it's annexed into the city doesn't mean it's going to be developed?
No, sir.
I think, were there any other questions that staff picked up on that we need to address at this point? Okay. We have, I think, two more speakers that would like to address the council. Thank you, sir. Mr. Daniel Holland. I'm not sure if you were able to hear or not, sir, but we're limiting comments to three minutes, and the council would like to know where you reside as well. Thank you for being here.
I'm in Bridgeport, which is a Cottonwood mailing address.
Thank you.
Most honorable Cottonwood City Council and esteemed audience, if we allow the annexation of public, state, and federal lands from Cottonwood to Spring Creek, we allow the strong possibility of strip malls, hotels, restaurants, offices, gas stations, et cetera, along 89A and our undeveloped beautiful forest lands. You are opening a Pandora's box of unlimited and unwanted development, destroying and despoiling our beautiful landscape and creating an unwanted raping of our beautiful natural heritage, not to mention the possibility of a small city of 7,000 on the northern borders called Spring Creek Ranch, which is a proposal, in the middle of the small community of Cornville. We must ask ourselves, is this what the Verde Valley and northern Arizona really wants and needs to become a northern suburb of Scottsdale? We must think carefully about what we leave our children, grandchildren, and great-grandchildren seven generations from today into our future. Is this the legacy we want to leave them? Unresponsible development, more pollution, more destruction, and more careless management of our national and natural resources? We have a choice here, to be responsible caretakers, growing in a sustainable fashion, or proceeding as we always have and leaving environmental devastation in our wake. We will be judged by future generations and our almighty God by the choices we make today. Please make the right one. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. All right, Kylie Koknik.
I'm Kylie. I live in Cornville, and I oppose to the annexation. I grew up in Cornville, and I've seen it as a very wild place nature-wise. There's deer, there's eagles, there's hawks. And every time I visit places that are more populated, I see that that has either gone completely or very little. We still see otters, and when I traveled across the country, they're extinct in most places across this country as well, which makes me really just sad that we haven't done better to protect the land. And I think that's what I would like to do, standing with anyone else in opposition to this. That's our duty. We're supposed to protect the land for the babies to come, the children in the future. They need clean water. The nature is important. I'm not going to say much more because I think the baby's wanting to take all the things off of here, so I just hope that you are with us in that decision. I really, really pray that you are with us. Thank you.
All right, thanks to you both. All right, that's it, unless there's anyone else last minute who'd like to speak. I think we're good. We got everyone in from outside. So listen, I just want to say thanks to everyone for being civil. This is obviously a very emotional topic. I think we're all here because we love our Verde Valley, and so it's difficult to see change, and I understand that completely. But really, everyone's very civil, and I appreciate that very much. Yeah, council, any questions, comments?
I don't know who should be addressed to, but I heard people asking about and talking about use of Oak Creek Valley as an ingress and egress. Is that on the table?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, at this time, because the development is not part of any discussions, we're not sure what they're looking to do. It's impossible to say. There's been no indication to us yet that they were going to take access off of there. Everything's been shown to be on Spring Creek Road. Doesn't mean that it won't, but as of right now, staff has not seen anything officially that says they will. So until we get to that development stage, it's hard to say right now.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, that'll be part of the development process, and P&amp;Z, city council, staff have lots of input to figure that out. My guess is FIRE will have something to do with some of that and those kinds of things.
All right. Mr. Els, while you're up, if you could just recap again the timeline of this process and what the next steps are, so the folks in the audience and those watching know how best to engage the council as this process moves forward.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, counsel, again, this hearing is required to be held within the last 10 days of a 30-day waiting period. That 30-day waiting period is on October 30th. At that time, we can circulate petitions to the property owners to have them sign. If they sign in favor of it, then we draft an annexation ordinance to bring to council to make a motion on. Along with that, we're required to do a 10-year infrastructure plan, and that's where we'll spell out what's going to happen with water, sewer, roads, any sort of infrastructure in the next 10 years if there's anything that gets developed. So that comes to the council as well. That has to be adopted at the time of the annexation ordinance. I don't know that I could give you a solid date on when that meeting will. Obviously, we'll advertise it. We'll put notices out when that is. But after this 30-day waiting period is up, we do have up to one year to collect those signatures and do this process. Doesn't look like it'll take much more time than potentially as short as a few weeks.
Okay. And then if they would like to propose a development other than the underlying zoning, which would carry with annexation, then what is the process for that? Again, if you could just go over that.
So that process there, they would come in, speak to planning staff in community development, go over what their initial thoughts are. We'll kind of guide them. It starts as early as our code review process, which is a staff-level meeting with each department and then the developer to go over their proposed development. Depending on what they decide, how they want to move forward, there's various mechanisms to do so. If it's a rezone, they go through our Planning and Zoning Commission. There's ample time to notice the hearings. They do have to have what's called a neighborhood notice, where we notify everybody within 300 feet of the property. That's a chance for neighbors to come, talk directly to the developer at a time and place of their choosing. That has to happen a minimum of 30 days prior to a Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, and that meeting gets advertised at least 15 days before that. Planning and Zoning Commission meeting gets advertised at least 15 days prior to. Master Development Plan would get sent out if they choose to do a PAD for review by multiple agencies and jurisdictions who would be affected or be within adjacent to. The Master Development Plan and rezone, as you know, would then come to council after P&amp;Z makes a recommendation for it. So there is a multi-step process, and that doesn't even include a potential general plan amendment, which is its own process itself, its own meetings, its own outreach to the public. So it is a multi-step process.
Okay. And general plan amendment would also go to Planning and Zoning and then to council as well?
Yes, sir.
All right, any other questions, comments from council? All right, well, I thank you for your time. And again, folks, we're all available to answer questions. Staff is as well. Thank you all of you for being here. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, then we move on to item two, which is ordinance number 687, amending the city's zoning ordinance relating to marijuana and medical marijuana facilities. This is the second and final reading.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, counsel. Mr. Mayor, if you would like me to do the presentation that I did on Tuesday night, I would go ahead and do that, or I can answer any questions. I know we didn't have a couple of the council members here.
Let's go ahead and do the presentation. Just briefly, thank you.
What we have is a proposed amendment to Section 308, which is our medical marijuana ordinance, which was adopted in 2010. Right now, on the ballot for the election on November 3rd is a Smart and Safe Arizona Act of 2020, Prop 207, to legalize marijuana establishments licensed by the state, basically to legalize recreational marijuana. The zoning code amendment is the most restrictive option that we have seen available to us. And basically, what this proposes to do is allow an establishment that wants to come in and sell retail marijuana, they must do so in conjunction with medical marijuana. So we call that a dual license. There is potential concern that an amendment passed after this goes into effect would be challenged by Prop 207 from 2006, which is property rights issues. Right now, our medical marijuana facilities are permitted in the C1, C2, and I2 zoning districts, subject to meeting required development standards, registration with the city. Obviously, they have to have a state license as well. This proposal does not allow the retail establishment to do it on their own, aside from the medical. There is no changes to the medical portion of it. Changes that would be incorporated have to do with the retail. We thought it best to include it within the medical part because a lot of what's in there would apply to the retail, especially if we go the dual license route. So again, they would be allowed in the C1, C2, and I2, would not be permitted standalone, so they'd have to be that dual license with a medical facility. Any questions, comments, discussion from council on that?
I appreciate you running through that again. We had a couple of council members that weren't present. We did have a discussion, and it just wasn't real, there was some disagreement. So I thought, given the timing of this, we just bring it forward for a vote. If it doesn't pass, then we can go back and workshop it and see if we can fine-tune this to something that the council works on. Given the timing again of everything, there wasn't time to workshop this ahead of time to get in front of this legislation, so. Mr. Hargie, I don't know if you were able to watch the meeting or not. I think you were vice mayor, but do you guys have any questions or anything that you want to share, concerns? Oh, okay. Okay. I think we're ready then for a vote. Seems two. I'll go ahead and move to approve ordinance number 687. Okay, mayor made the motion. Vice mayor seconded. If we could have the deputy clerk take a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Henry?
No.
Councilmember Hulse?
Yes.
Councilmember Hargie?
Yes.
Councilmember Narin?
No.
Councilmember Wildin?
No.
Vice Mayor Matthews?
Yes.
Mayor Alinsky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay. If we could have the deputy clerk please read ordinance number 687 by title only.
Ordinance number 687, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, sorry, lost my place. City of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending the city's zoning ordinance relating to marijuana and medical marijuana facilities. Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, I would move then to adjourn. Okay, mayor made the motion. Councilmember Henry seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you.